Well, we have a quorum. Shall we go ahead and get started? The Towne Cockroft Planning Board Meeting, January 21st. And this meeting is being televised and recorded. So you may also record it yourself if you'd like, but if so, let us know so that we can make arrangements to not disrupt the meeting. So I'll start off with our first item on the agenda tonight, which is reviewing our decision on the application of the Shover Brook School under Section 11.8 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new 5,900 square foot two-story structure on an existing playing field with a connecting walkway and related site improvements to the parking lot and student drop-off area at 200 Strawberry Hill Road. So did people get a chance to look at the decision letter? The decision, I should say, not memo. And I had only one comment, which I sent in to Elizabeth already, which was that there was a statement about the solar panels on the roof. And it said, you know, that they will be installing them, but I think that what we heard was that they intend to install them when they get funding.
Funds become available.
Yeah, so I just thought it would be more accurate to indicate that.
That's on page four, by the way, under criteria.
And there was also a word "of" missing there in the midst of that. "Of the roof," I think it was, something like that. Any other comments on the decision? So do we need a motion at this point? Yes. So can I get a motion to approve this one?
Yeah, let me just get to language here. All right. I would make a motion for, this is site plan, so this is for approval, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
A motion to approve the application in the Shover Brook School under Section 11.8 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new 5,900 square foot two-story structure on an existing playing field, a connecting walkway and related site improvements to the parking lot, and a student drop-off area of 200 Strawberry Hill Road, parcel 1955. A second there.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? And it is after 7:05, so we'll go after our next one. So that's a public hearing of Lemonade's Development Company under Sections 5.3, 18, and 11.6, the zoning bylaw for a special permit to allow the construction of a common driveway to serve up to two lots on land located at 2160 Main Street. And then on this one, any comments on the draft decision memo? Once again, I did have one comment, which with the word closets, needed to be changed to closest. Unless we're putting some closets next to the road.
Anything further? No, I don't make a motion.
Any other comments? Okay.
Okay, I would make a motion to recommend for approval.
Don't be granting.
Nope, we're granting.
Oh, Rick, I would recommend to, a motion to grant a special permit of, for the, for the application of Lemonade's Development Company, Inc., under Sections 5.3, 18, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for a special permit to allow the construction of a common driveway to serve up to two lots on land located at 2160 Main Street, parcel 2326-2-1.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion of this one? All right, all in favor? Okay. So now we're two minutes away from our 7:10 item. So following our regular normal procedure, I think we should jump ahead for a second and just look at minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review tonight. I thought that the minutes from 11:26 were particularly well done, considering how challenging that meeting was. So, and I didn't actually have any, I saw a couple tiny word choice things, but I thought, eh, they're fine.
Almost there. Almost there. Perfection.
Well, no, actually, I think 11:26 was perfect.
Oh, okay.
It's the 11:12 that, I don't know, there was a word here or there, but.
They're fine.
As far as I was concerned.
Are we considering the 11:12, are we, the November 26th, minutes first?
I think we could look, we could just make a motion for them both, right? We could just approve them both.
It's written.
It's written. If no one has any edits.
I'm still getting thunder.
Yeah, you may want to make a motion to accept some minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of both November 26th and December 10th, 2019.
Hold it. Do we have the right dates on these? I know there are four different dates here, but I thought it was.
Yeah, we don't have the 12th yet, and you don't have the 26th.
Oh, we still don't have 11:12?
No.
Okay, got it.
We have the 26th, oh, the 12:26, we have November 26th.
12, you don't have 12:26.
Okay. So, again, make a motion to approve minutes of November 26th, 2019, and 12, December 10th, 2019, as drafted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, I think we are now at 7:10. So we're able to take our third agenda item, which is the 59 Walden Street visualization study, and we have a presentation from either MAPC or MAPC, whichever you prefer, and.
For MAPC.
And we, so Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And this is something that we queued up last year in, in order to try to make headway on understanding that area, which has a lot of zoning variation in a very small space. So, take it away.
All right. Where would you like me to present from? What's easiest for this room?
I think that you probably could sit up here, like, yeah, right around the vent here. Or over there.
That top corner, Josh?
And you could introduce yourself.
Do you have it, Elizabeth?
Yes, I better.
Good evening. Josh Fialla, Principal Planner with MAPC in the Land Use Department there, here at the request of the Board and Elizabeth, who asked that we look at 59 Walden Street and do a series of illustrations and visualizations. We understand that it's a property that's been discussed in the past in regard to redevelopment opportunity, potential under current zoning and future zoning characteristic considerations. So a series of illustrations, just to walk through those, that will hopefully add to the conversation that the Board may be having in the future. I apologize, I'm still working through a cold, which I acquired in the last week, so. So the agenda of what I have is effectively just an organization of illustrations that we've done here on the slide, the second slide. We've looked at illustrations for the existing property, then gone through a series of variations in height for a prospective building, comparing that to the existing conditions and the surrounding neighboring properties, and then gone through a series of variations in other zoning characteristics, parking requirements, and open space requirements, and then a final recombination of several of those variables together. So walk you through that now. Take me down to the next slide. So first is the, just an existing summary of the characteristics of the property. So these are from a variety of sources, the assessor's database, GIS database, a recent property listing for the property. It's in the LB2 zoning district. Its lot is just under a half acre, around 1,900 square feet. The rentable living, rentable building area is 4,451 square feet. Living area is a little less than that. There's a finished basement. The use currently is office, although I believe it's still vacant. It's a one-story building, approximately 14-foot walls today, not to the peak of the roof. 23 spaces to the rear of that building, which work out to a parking ratio today of about 5.78 per 1,000 square feet. About 77% impervious area on the site, 27% of that being open space today. So here is a illustration.
I'm sorry, so some of the open space is impervious?
Some of the open space and the way that that is calculated includes the side blocks on site.
Got it. Thanks.
So here is an existing conditions illustration, the area that we've modeled, which is basically the surrounding context, including the buildings, some of the landscape, although the tree placement isn't exact, it's kind of going based on aerial photographs. And that's the area around 59 Walden Street, on Walden Street, including back behind it, the Mill Brook and the First Parish, in front of it across the street, Trinitarian Congregational, and then the Performing Arts Center is another sort of landmark there, right in the town center. Down to the next one.
I might be allowed to be late.
Yes, you're allowed to be late.
So Elizabeth, you can scroll me down to the next one. Thanks. And here is that same context, just zoomed in a little bit closer, and then I have one, one further zoom in closer, focused on Walden Street itself, the 59 Walden Street property. And you can see the property outlined in yellow there with the characteristics I've just described. And just to check that we've, so these are all, I should say, existing conditions which have been modeled based upon the GIS information which is available, so we brought that into a program called SketchUp and have used the program SketchUp to extrude those footprints and features into the third dimension, and then based upon photographs like you see here, and just understanding of building scale and sizes, have created the three-dimensional model. And it's approximately right, as you can see in the comparison between the model we've created and a photograph from across the street. But we have not gone on-site and sort of snapped measurements or verified heights or anything like that. So it's pretty close for our purposes here. So here is the collection of height variations which we've gone through. There's the current building, which you can see to the peak is about 24 feet, to the mean pitch of the roof, about 16 and 3/4. And then the, and we've done the mean slope between the eve and the peak, because that's how the zoning height is measured. And you can see the variations from there moving across the columns to the right. There's an alternative A, 1A and 1B, which are both two-story alternatives, and that's 27 and 1/2 feet to the height of the, either to the mean, if it's the pitch, or to the flat, height of the flat roof, if it's a flat roof parapet. So those are two-story variations. The 2A and 2B are three-story variations with a pitched roof and a flat roof as well. You can see the resulting variations in building area and the differences in slope, which I just described.
Can I stop you at this?
Sure.
Is that going to completely screw it up?
No, go ahead.
Can we refresh, me, and I don't know if Haley was here when we discussed this a little while ago, can we just refresh on why we're looking at 59 Walden Street if we're contemplating changing zoning there and why we're doing that? Sorry. Please just back up.
Again, okay. I mean, you, we, we had, there was a building there.
There is a building there.
There is a building there, yeah. The building's been unoccupied for some amount of time. We had discussions about the height requirements in that area. We came up with a height recommendation that was 27.5 feet, I think to provide more flexibility in the structure options that were there. And, but then after a while, there was a request perhaps to further increase that, and then we had discussions with neighbors and so on, and now that led to the need to kind of make a study like this, to try to understand better what would be reasonable for the site, what would fit into the context of the neighborhood, because there's residential historic properties on one side, there's a, you know, arts facility on the other side that's a much larger scale. And so, you know, what really works, especially given that the site slopes down in the back, and we have goals to have mixed use where possible, and lots of other things. So that's why.
Am I going to add to that? We were looking at expanding the, it's a limited business district. It's historically been a retail bank location that is, but it's also available for office space. That use, the current owner's not been able to lease it out to another retail bank for some time. And we were looking at expanding use, and there were people that are in the residential area immediately adjacent that were concerned about that, and this is a discussion that has come up, probably about once a generation, to change that use, and we were presented with quite a history on that discussion, when we considered changing the use.
Yeah, I think originally we had considered, should we just move it into the business district that's the main part of the town center? But I said no, we looked into, you know, expanding what that limited business, limited business district could be used for, because it's just, it's a single building.
As it stands, just that building is that district.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, okay, thank you. And is, do we?
No, that's helpful, which is, when you were last in.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed, and I hope I didn't completely mess it up.
No, I think that's very helpful. Thank you for the additional context. I will highlight that our study was relatively focused, so it was really focused on the illustrations, it wasn't the broader planning study. So I'm not necessarily giving forward recommendations this evening, but just providing additional information and visuals that might help in those conversations.
That's helpful.
So you do show some mixed use options.
Correct, yes. All right, so I'll just go, so with this summary of the height variations, I'll just go through a series of slides now, which show those in more detail. So the first being the current building, again with our approximate, approximated existing conditions that was highlighted. So each of these illustrations have a similar call-out boxes to the right. So one-story building that exists has an elevated basement that gets higher as you move out towards the rear of the property, with the grade of the property dropping back towards the brook. There's about 16 and 1/2 feet to the mean of the slope of the existing building, 4,500 square feet roughly of the building today, and 23 parking spaces on site. On the next slide, you see that building again in the street view, which helps to judge the, the building height relative to its neighbors in that view. That's, this is more, you experience towns, of course, from this perspective, not from that drone's eye perspective that I was showing on the previous slide. So the first variation was a pitched roof that is up to two stories. So this is 27 and 1/2 feet to the mean of the slope, about 32 and 1/2 feet to the peak of that slope. It would allow you to add an additional floor, so another 2,400 or so square feet. And the way I've looked at this is basically to keep it simple, using the existing foundation as the guide to add space, not getting too creative in terms of how a new building could be disposed of on the site. I'll have a few more comments about that as we go on, but there's potentially good reason to follow this approach and the existing footprint as it is. If you were to do something like this, it might result in about two units that you could add, residential units to the upper floor, and that would provide a mixed-use building that could contribute to the town center in some different ways. If you add those spaces, because there are a number of extra parking spaces on the site today as per zoning, you could effectively park those two units with the spaces that are already there on site, with a one-space surplus, actually. So that's a, one look at a different type of approach to the property than what is there today, that might provide additional economic viability if the Board were to consider that in the future. And there's that view of that property in context, so I would say fitting, fitting relatively nicely within the context of the neighboring properties.
Does that match in the height of the, um, performing arts?
No, it's much, it's lower.
It's, oh, I'm sorry.
It's, yeah, I would say.
Did you say what?
So part of our process was actually to use this as a step down, where we came up with the 27 and 1/2 feet.
Yes.
Was kind of to step down from the business district.
That's the mean, that's the mean of the pitch, though.
Right.
So it could be the same height as the, as the Performance Art, the Performing Arts Center?
I don't think so. I think the Performing Arts Center is taller.
I think it, I did not snap those measurements off, but I do think that the Performance Art to its peak is higher than 35 feet, I hazard a guess. Again, we didn't actually measure that, but just to get its proportionality correct.
We have some old documents with that info, I'm pretty sure, back when we first looked at this.
And then I think the residence to the right is a smaller structure with more historic floor-to-floor heights, which are shorter. And then this is a depiction of a two-story structure to 27 and 1/2 feet of the flat roof. So the top of that parapet of the flat roof is actually held to the 27 and 1/2 feet. And you see a similar, I mean, it's the same basic idea in terms of square footage, two units above, continuing this existing structure, and it's up to a second floor. And the same story in regard to the parking holds true, where you have enough parking to support that additional space on the second floor. And this is how that flat roof would look relative to its neighbors. The height considerations are one thing, but then the, the actual articulation of a pitched roof, of course, is potentially more in context with the character of the Cockroft Town Center. And then this is an exploration of even more height, so a third story, following the same basic approaches that we used previously, sticking with the footprint and foundation of the existing building and just extruding that upwards to the peak, in this case, which is 40 feet, 35 feet to the mean of the slope. You can add another floor, so you're adding approximately 4,900 square feet, again, two units, give or take, per floor, so you'd be a total of four units. And then in this case, even though you do have parking to use on the site beyond the use of the space that's there today, you would get beyond what's provided, so you'd have more uses than you can park with this arrangement. So you'd need three more spaces than you have on site. So that would either have to be potentially combined with a change in the parking ratios and requirements, or you'd have to reduce the square footage, that would be maybe a half of the top floor in this case, or something like that.
And that parking is based upon what, what uses, parking capacity?
On a ground floor use of commercial, which is what it is today, and then the residential uses above, and in the zoning today, it's two parking spaces per unit are required.
And you're assuming four units total in this case?
Yeah, they work out to.
I mean, you could also have three units.
Yes, you could have three units, which would bring it a little more in alignment, but you'd still have a need for a few more parking spaces. You, I think the estimate of unit size is always a little tricky, but in this case, I think you end up with units which are in the neighborhood of 11 or 1,200 square feet, which is probably, you know, reasonably suited to the town center. But it could be, I mean, you could potentially fit more smaller units in that same amount of space, but then you might have more of a parking issue. Here you can see the 35-foot pitched roof in context of its neighbors. Just an editorial comment, to my eye, this looks like it's getting a little out of context with its neighbors. And then a similar relationship with a three-story parapet, so this 35 feet to the top of that third-floor parapet, same characteristics in terms of the mile square feet that you're adding, and the relationship to the parking. And again, still, still maybe even less, just as tall, but without the benefit of a pitched roof, so maybe even less in character with its context. And these illustrations focus on looking at the parking and varying that parking requirement to see what potential flexibility that might yield. So the current status, again, there's 23 spaces on the site today, that works out to about 5.78 per 1,000 square feet. It's all commercial space today, no residential uses. If we were to introduce residential uses today, alternative P1 is representative of the current zoning requirement, so two spaces per residential unit. And then you would have the commercial space accounted for at the one space per 250 net square feet of the zoning bylaw. And so you could, as I was showing, add that second floor of residential and have 22 spaces required, which is one less than is there today. Then you could also think about reducing the residential requirement, so taking it down to 1 and 1/2 spaces per unit, which would allow more residential space to be built with a very similar amount of parking. And that's another way to increase density. Density is often tied to economic viability very closely, so the more stuff you can build, the more economically viable it generally is. And so if you reduce the 1 and 1/2 spaces, down to 1 and 1/2 spaces, hold the commercial at 1 per 250, you could potentially add a little more space out the back of the property towards the brook. And I, having gone through the height exercise here, I should note, I made the decision at this point to stick to a two-story height, because that looked to be the more appropriate of those height variations, rather than the three-story height. So as opposed to adding the extra space, as I'm reducing the parking ratio, that extra space gets created that you could, could construct, I've put that toward the brook, out of the rear, rear of the property, to add space that would, effectively beyond columns over the parking that's out in the back. Then the third column is reducing the parking even further to one space per residential unit, which would give you even more flexibility. So let's, let's walk through those, the more detailed slides on each of those. And this is the current parking layout, which we've roughly drawn based upon aerials, again, I haven't gone out and measured anything on-site, but I will note that the width of the property is a difficult one in terms of parking. So a typical parking bay comes in 60-foot increments, so if you have a double-loaded parking, so just squared off 90-degree parking with an aisle with parking on either side, that is a 60-foot bay. An 87-foot property width doesn't allow you to do multiple bays of parking. So that's why you see this pretty creative parking layout, which is shown on-site today with angled parking and a combination of parallel parking on the property. I didn't explore too much, but my, my guess is that there's not many other parking layouts that would optimize parking on-site as much as what you see there today, just because of the nature of that width. It's not even, I mean, 90 feet would even be a little bit better, because you'd be able to get 1 and 1/2 bays of typical parking, but 87 feet is tough when you, it's basically wall-to-wall, lot line to lot line, pervious surface and parking area at this point, and it works reasonably well with the two driveways, the in and out, the angled parking, and then squeezing a few more extra parking spaces out with the parallel as it's laid out. So I don't think it's, in this, in the property's case, probably a matter of optimizing the parking layout to be even better. Sometimes that's the case where. Sometimes that's the case where parking layouts are a little inefficient. That's probably, you're probably not going to get more parking out of this site. So that's one thing to know as we think about parking, and as we move down. This is the existing parking requirement, so you can pretty comfortably add a second level of residential to the property. You could potentially even do a little bit larger, full new construction building that would give you a little bit more square footage, because you have one more parking space on the site today. But how, how the economics of that might work out to take down a building to then replace it with a building that's almost the same exact footprint, I'm not sure. So this, this might be an approach where you effectively add a second floor. And so that's twenty-four hundred square feet of additional space. Again, about two units, when you account for some circulation between the units or vertical circulation to get up to the units. And that's against those parking ratios of one per two-fifty for the commercial and two per unit for the residential, you can park that on site today. So if you reduce the parking down to a space and a half per unit, you can add an additional floor of space, about the size of the footprint of the existing building. And instead of taking that up a third floor, as I mentioned, I put that out the back of the property. So you have a floor of occupiable space which is effectively floating over the parking with columns strategically placed to not encroach upon existing parking spaces, so you can keep the same number of spaces. And this would allow you to add, again, four units instead of two, and you'd be roughly in line with one and a half spaces per unit. Although I do note that there's a one-space deficit, so that, that might have to be worked out, or the square footage could be reduced. But I think in, in the economics of these properties, the difference between three units and four units is a pretty big deal. So it might be worthwhile to try to figure out a way through the zoning or working with the property owner, if this was a desirable outcome, to try to make sure that that one-space deficit could be resolved somehow and that this, the difference between three units and four units could be, could be worked in a, in the favor of economic redevelopment opportunity.
Well, I've negotiated many very interesting Spanish parking garages that are very tight. I think that these columns might restrict the number of spaces below the existing twenty-three in the spaces available, I mean.
Yeah, it, I don't know the exact width of the spaces today.
No.
So you're right, there, there might be, if they're already pushing towards compact spaces-
Right, if they're just all full-size spaces, you might be able to-
If there's some, if the space widths are nine or ten feet today, then you may have a little bit of room to make some of those underneath the new building extension, mark those as compact spaces, or do other ways to resolve that. But you're right, it may, it may result in, depending on how many columns you have landing in that parking lot, it may result in a little bit of the need to consolidate some of those spaces, and maybe you'd lose one or two in the process, in which case you might be looking more at three units instead of four.
And the slope of the property provides adequate height to do something like that?
Yeah, I think within the new, if the maximum height were to be extended to twenty-seven and a half feet with the way the site is sloping down-
Yeah.
You would have plenty of clearance for cars and circulation underneath the building extension while respecting the maximum height. Okay, next, and then the last one. And this, this one, excuse me, this one might push that comment I just made a little bit, because you're trying to fit in clearance for the parking and circulation underneath, but then also two stories to the rear of the property. So, and still maintain the, I think I did push the back elevation more towards the, it's not quite thirty-five feet, but it is over twenty-seven and a half in this case, so you can see it's just a little bit taller than the front. But what I didn't have was a survey plan available to know how quickly the grade is dropping off to the rear. So this might be, might not accurately depict what you could accomplish in that back height. But I'm getting a little ahead of myself, I'll just give you the basics of what's happening here. So the parking in this diagram is reduced to one space per residential unit, and that allows you, again, the ability to create more occupiable space and square footage. I've shown that in this case as another addition to the space that's extended back towards the brook. So it'd be two stories over the parking columns which I was just describing. So you'd need roughly eight feet of clearance below that occupiable space at minimum, and then another, say, if you call it ten feet for each of those floors above. So that would be twenty-eight feet right there, if this, back to the slope. The slope is, at that point, maybe you've gained a four feet or so, so you're around twenty-four feet to the eve. And so you'd be in the neighborhood of twenty-seven and a half or so feet at the midpoint of the slope in the back. But it might poke up a little bit over what you see. So that's what I'm, what I'm depicting here. Is that if you did something like this, that rear elevation might actually be a little bit higher than what we were seeing for twenty-seven and a half, or a thirty, thirty-ish to the peak. But that, I, my feeling was that might be a little more acceptable, because it's so far pushed back from the street frontage, and it wouldn't be, the way perspective and the street view would work, is that, that any couple-foot difference that you would see for that low back building mass wouldn't really be that discernible from the street. Although it might be more noticeable if you're one of the neighboring properties. And then the last set of variations that we looked at were open space requirements. So there's no open space requirement for commercial uses, but there is for residential uses. So if you add residential space, the first column, alternative O one, or the first column is the current status, there's no residential space, so no open space is required. The alternative O one column is the current requirement for residential open space, so two times the residential gross floor area. So however many square feet you've created, you need to create twice as much of that on site for open space. I've looked at a potential reduction of that requirement to one times, so you would match the residential gross floor area, or a further reduction of point seven-five, the residential square footage in open space. And you can see the, the relationship there is, again, as you're pulling down those requirements, you're allowing the amount of square footage that could be built to increase. And that's what you see across the bottom line.
What, can you just explain, what's, what's open space mean? So includes, because on the graphic, it doesn't look like, the green area does look like twenty-seven percent. But you're saying includes sidewalks? By buffer, you mean buffer to the brook? Or you mean buffer to, can you just explain what's included in open space?
Yeah, maybe, Elizabeth, if you could scroll back to one of those, actually, I think down I had a diagram that did show that.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, sorry, I should just let you-
No, no, it's fine. So this is, and actually, you might, you all might need to correct this, because I just had the thought that I don't know if this is the same as your legal definition of open space. But the way I've calculated in this diagram is, is effectively anything that's not parking or building area on the site is counted as open space. So that would be the, the buffer with the eighteen percent that you see that's back at the rear of the property, which is green space that goes toward the brook. It would be the planting beds around the building, which are with, where the five percent and the green is. And it would also include the sidewalks that are on the building as well, which are pervious surfaces but are, you know, occupiable by people and open space.
Impervious surface.
Yes, impervious surface.
So it's not, it's not the public sidewalk, it's that four, whereas this four percent, there's a sidewalk just right, hugging against the building?
I'm not sure if it's a, it's a walkway, I believe, I don't know if it's a sidewalk or a curb.
Okay, that helps, okay.
But yes, it's only on-site assets that are a part of this calculation. It's not the public sidewalk that's off the property. Does that help clarify? So that's, that's how we're looking at it. Today, it's about fifty-one hundred square feet or twenty-seven percent of the site.
And all the, all the parking, when you said the parking calculations is based upon commercial on the first floor, that's a current use of the office, office, sorry, okay. Or what is it there, it's officer?
I want to check this is two.
Which is office space or professional?
Both of those uses are, yeah, the same, but four, four spaces per thousand square feet. Yeah.
But, but it's retail?
No.
Retail's different.
Those are different numbers.
Yes.
Depending upon the specific retail use.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And it's more, just again, to note that the parking that's provided on site today is more than is required.
It seems like it when you're there. It seems like the building's small and parking's large.
So this is, again, isolating the open space feature, so it's, it kind of repeats and tells the same story that we just went through with parking. But if you do require a less open space, then you are able to add a little bit more square footage. So for example, this, actually, this is the current requirement, so the two-point-oh. So you can add, again, the second story of residential, because there is no residential today, which would trigger the open space requirement. And that would actually get you, the site, open space, which I've just outlined on the previous slide, that, that amount of area is, would be in compliance with the requirement at two-point-oh. So you could add the second floor, you would be in compliance with open space, and you would be in compliance with the parking that's required as well. And then if you reduce the open space, you can do a similar relationship where you'd have additional square footage that you could provide, and that additional square footage could be pushed out towards the back. So in this case, you are expanding the amount of area, but because you're only requiring a match, a one, one-point-oh of open space to the gross square footage of area that you're producing in residential, then you can create more space and still be within the amount of open space which is already provided on the site. And so you, one of the lessons learned here, just comparing these, is to get the benefit of reducing the parking requirement, you probably also need to reduce the open space requirement at some level, or else the two, you might counteract the progress you might make by reducing the parking requirement by still requiring the open space to be as high as it is. So these probably want to work together. And then the last illustration of this, which actually shows how, how kind of closely in lockstep they are working together. You, if you were to go for the deeper reduction in the parking, to get that down to, what was I, what was I? To reduce down to one-point-oh per residential unit, you probably need to be in the neighborhood of somewhere around point seven-five for the open space requirement to be able to support a similar building mass that would result from that. And so you're still, even with this large area, if you're at point seven-five, then you are still providing enough open space on site to be in compliance with that point seven-five of gross residential area. And then, as you can imagine, all of these variations and combinations can get interesting and complicated very quickly. But I did want to do one combined variation, which you see here on the right, which is reducing the residential per unit to one parking space per unit, which I think I'll also comment on for a walkable transit-oriented town center. That's a reasonable parking ratio that we're seeing these days, and is actually supporting both walking and transit ridership by not encouraging people to have more than one car if they're a resident there. And then also looking at adjusting the gross floor area. In this case, not too much of a deep adjustment, but keeping it below the current requirement of two, and taking it down to one-point-seven-five. And I think one of the interesting things, if you look at that, is that it may, if it does include elevated residential decks, excuse me, would have some benefit of adding some additional open space on the site potentially, while still being within an area of, still being a amount of open space that you could support in development. So Elizabeth, if you flip to the next slide.
Do these, are these build-outs increased, like adding residential, obviously, but in all of these, is the first floor commercial space also extended, or is it about the same amount of commercial space? I'm sorry, I'm so-
It's the same, same square footage.
Okay.
For the commercial.
Perfect, okay. The same as existed, okay.
So, excuse me. So in this case, you are, again, adding a additional square footage on the second floor and adding square footage out the back of the property. And you would have approximately three units instead of the four which some others showed. You'd be supporting the property with, or supporting the building with twenty-one spaces of parking which would be required, which would actually, may, may be a sweet spot in terms of the scale here, because you'd be able to reduce the current parking by about two spaces. And that would allow you to gain a modest amount back at the rear of the property towards the brook to actually add pervious surface back to the property, and still provide additional economic development benefit, redevelopment opportunity. And then, as I was mentioning, add some meaningful open space there, but then also in the form of residential decks on that addition, which could be useful to the residences as well. So, and that would all be within the context of the twenty-seven and a half foot maximum height, which would potentially fit with the neighboring context and have a nice consistency with the, the street character of Walden Street. I think that might be, oh, here, just a further illustration of the open space that I've just discussed. So at the ratio of one-point-seven-five, with the larger, larger residential area than what exists today, which is none, you would actually be required to create more open space on site than there is today, which would result in some of those things that I just mentioned, like the additive pervious space towards the rear of the property and/or additional decks for the property's residences. So with that, I'll answer any other questions you all have, and fully this hope in the discussions.
I guess unless a question, then. The original problem was that they can't find someone for the space that exists, and none of this addresses the space for, for business use, and we're not changing the use, the uses that can be there other than adding residential. Or I guess residential is already an option for that. Then how does this solve the original problem we re-cast?
Well, it may mean you don't have to maximize the value of the commercial on the first floor, and it's more attractive as office space if you are able to minimize value from residential as well. Maybe?
What, can you just tag out? So what are the current, a lot of uses? As you just said, it's-
Essentially, banks, professional space, offices.
And are there more uses that could be contemplated? Like, it's expanding the uses without changing the height?
That's what we looked at in the last round?
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
And there was concern raised, so it's really, this is a transition property, right, between the, the- between the main commercial district and their houses that start. And there's a concern that, for example, if something went in there that had food service or would have traffic in the evening hours, that that would be, that that would start to push the commercial into the residential district. I'm not arbitrarily stating it, but neighbors vary. So this is a transition property. So the idea is, how do you come up with a use that defines, you know, works with the, adds to the vibrancy of the commercial district to the north and work, like, I don't know, the compass on the site, but that direction. And then that, but it doesn't intrude on the residential.
So and the feeling at the time was that somebody would, although having more busy commercial uses was not desirable, people were okay with having a much larger mass of building? If that was more residential? Or we don't know that yet, because we'd never put these out and had people react to them.
I don't remember the height very, then that might have been my time before I was on the floor.
What about the?
The height.
Well, so, yeah, I was pulling up the warrant article back when, way back when, and where the height was adjusted to twenty-seven-and-a-half feet from the prior twenty-five-foot maximum. And so that was the kind of the first round we went through, where we did kind of an interpolation of the heights and came up with that number and thought, okay, you could put two stories. So, you know, it would seem like a way to make this property work. And then it still sat empty. And then we got requests, you know, to perhaps change use or change height or?
So I'm sorry, have we changed it already to twenty-seven-and-a-half?
Yeah.
Oh, we have?
Yeah, past town meeting. I was trying to remember what year this Article forty-one, doesn't say, but it was like, I don't know, twenty-sixteen, somewhere in there, twenty-fourteen, somewhere in there.
And is that twenty-seven-and-a-half the mean or the peak?
Let's see, it's a way that we calculate the heights in the business district, which I think is at the mean.
It's halfway up the slope.
Yes, the mean. So it's not, and so that twenty-seven-and-a-half feet, this, what he's rendered is that kind of.
So under the current zoning, you could put a second floor on that with a pitched roof?
Yes, you could. Or with a flat roof, of course, but yes. And so, I mean, for me, looking at this study, it makes it feel like, yeah, twenty-seven-and-a-half feet, that was about dead-on. It just looks, you know, in terms of the maximum height, where it starts to not, you know, feel in context.
Can we go back to that? Can you?
Yeah, those comparisons. It's just like, I'm okay with everything up through, you know, the, was it H-one-B or something like that? Yeah, everything up to H-one-B. I mean, stylistically, a flat roof may or may not work, but in terms of bulk, it seemed like, well, you know, H-one-A, it's certainly bigger than what's there now, but it's not out of scale feeling to me, at least just for me.
I'd say it's actually more in scale than a one-story building with a pitched roof.
Where it kind of dips back down and then goes, yeah.
So what year was this done, that it was up to twenty-seven-and-a-half?
I think twenty-sixteen, that's.
And so why have they not done anything?
There was, apparently they marketed the property and couldn't make it go, but I don't know. So, you know, I look back at this and I go, it seems to validate the twenty-seven-and-a-half-foot height for me. Now, what's interesting is that you've looked at a couple other factors there, the parking ratio and the open space requirements, which drive some of the other parameters for the building. And, you know, you had some kind of creative approaches that, because I don't think that people had been considering the possibility of extending backwards or anything like that, but.
And all of these proposals, to be clear, would require a change of use for the site to allow residential?
I think it mixed use, can we do mixed use now? I think you could do mixed, I think that.
You gave that at the same time as you gave the twenty-seven-foot.
Yeah.
Is mixed use now something?
Yeah, I think you could do mixed use now. So the thing is that, like, you could just build this.
That's quite right.
And, you know, it's, and the way I look at this, I feel like, well, we're not far off here.
Is this in historic, is this in the historic district?
The historic district, yes, and it goes right through there.
So what does that mean for how that, like, the facade would be regulated?
They would have to get approval from the historic district's commission.
Yeah, so they'd have to like what it looked like.
That's what that means.
Now, they also, they liked what the library looked like, just to, just to keep that in mind.
What's that little couple, like, the little cross on the top? Is that the church?
In the background, there's the First Parish is back there.
First Parish.
Yeah, the cross is not quite that distinct on the actual building.
I didn't understand why you added the one stylistic detail. It was interesting that you did that, okay.
We modeled sort of the context and that's just the way it belonged.
Yeah, sketchup.
That looks like a little. Okay, um.
Yeah, well, the door.
So I just want to, I, you know, this is, I can see why this has taken years and years, because it's such a sensitive spot. But in it, so we've been talking about the public way, you just referenced the public way as being from the street. But I, there's a, but it's like a public passageway that almost seems like an ancient way of the type that you get to keep using over time, even if it's on private property, in between this property and the Performing Arts Center, for example, that you can use to access the preschool and the church, right? Do we know, is that like an ancient way or a public, or a public right-of-way? It's not next door, but I'm just saying that actually, it's like there's sort of public access from the.
There's the Millbrook back there.
What besides Millbrook, there's a passageway that I think is a public passageway officially.
It's not on this property.
I know it's not on this way, but I'm saying that as we consider what the public way is and the view from the public, there's a public view from along the whole side of it as well as from the street, potentially.
I mean, that path goes down alongside the Performing Arts Center.
That would be a legal question, that would be the answer.
Okay.
But I mean, the path, I think, is on the public arts, the, or on the art center.
I thought we did this the last time, and it was actually part of First Parish's property.
Yes. Oh.
It's not on this site.
You think, I know it's not on the site, sorry.
But it's private property that the church allows.
So the church has an easement, you think?
No, the church owns the property.
The church owns the performing arts?
No.
No, that's correct.
They own it in fee. They own it in fee.
It's a twenty-foot strip. It goes along fifty-one Walden.
Okay, excuse me, we're gonna, we're gonna bring this, Nancy will kill me.
Okay, all right, so, there we go, this was.
There we go, a little Concord GIS.
There's that strip between fifty-one and fifty-nine.
Thank you. God bless us, now I get it. Okay, thank you so much for doing that.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
So, back to the criteria here. I guess the question that I'd have is based upon this visualization study, you know, is there anything we want to do beyond what we've done? I mean.
I, I think this is probably something that, that the board can take questions and comments from the public, since Josh is here, and then continue this, after everybody's had time to digest this, continue this for a more robust discussion given.
Yeah, but I mean, that's ultimately what we're trying, we're here to do eventually.
I think we should, I think we should add back, I think we should add these alternatives to the full universe of alternatives, including the changes of use that maybe were rejected in the past. Like, I don't think that we should just consider these in isolation from those other, contemplate the changes of use, that's my opinion.
So just, so we're, to be clear, so H-one-B as an alternative, we think would fit within the existing?
That was my opinion, but, you know.
Existing zoning.
Oh, it would, yes, that.
Or at least something quite close to that, once you pull out your tape measure. And those other alternatives would require changes of zoning that were specific not to use, but to potentially allowing for a lesser amount of parking in an open space.
Yeah, and it's basically the rules for either Concord or the limited business district number two, you know, that are imposing those kinds of constraints on the building size and on, you know, the kind of uses that could go in there. So, I mean, what he's trying to say is if you relax some of those constraints, here's what could happen.
Right, but sticking to the combination of the existing commercial use together with residential.
Right, the undercurrent zoning, it looks like anything up to H-one-B could be built, as is, I mean, the parking with the open space requirement with the height, right? And so, you know, one thing is to say, well, if that's adequate, then we would be done. But then, one other question for you is that while you have stayed within the footprint of the current structure, that really any reconstruction would not be necessarily limited by that. Of course, it would affect the open space and so on, but, and then, of course, any design would have to go in front of the HTC, but that, you know, you, even with the twenty-seven-and-a-half feet, you could end up with a bigger building than the one he's showing, even the block building. So just to note that.
That's, that's correct, yeah, I didn't, I started, I did start some variations when I was initially looking at this, that did not stick to the existing building footprint, but quickly returned to the footprint because of the optimized parking that is on the site today and realized that a large building footprint, you can't really get back enough parking to support a large building footprint. So this was one of the optimizing approaches, not considering optimizing approaches which would use other types of parking, like structured parking under the building footprint or things like that, which I'm not sure if the economics are there to support that type of approach in Concord.
I mean, it's interesting to see that that footprint yields a pretty attractive building. I mean, if you, you know, just by luck, it's actually better looking than the current building.
Wait, which one? This one?
This, yeah, you know, the, the current footprint has some interest to it and I don't know, it renders well, I think. Okay, well, I'll just say it compared to what's there.
It has no detail, it has, you know, it has nothing to it.
Yeah, okay, so maybe we're, we were ready to open, and we're not the HTC anyway. Maybe we should open to public comment. Okay, anyone for the public? Yes, I think I saw a handback here first. Want to start?
Sure, I'm Travis Snell of Concord Property Management. I represent the property owner, and I've been before you all for years now, talking about this property. And I really appreciate your time and the study that you've done. I do have some questions relative to the study first, which would be really specifically the building on the left that you call the performing, the arts center. I do think that you should verify the heights of that structure, because my recollection is it's forty-five feet at its height. And in that rendering right there, that is not forty-five feet. That makes it look significantly lower. And I think the back of that building, the performing arts center, is that height. So if you're going to be accurate or at least present this, because visually it certainly, you know, can give a lot of people, a lot of impressions of different things, I think we should make sure the facts are correct on that. And the other thing I want to talk about is to thank the board for thinking of all these different things. I mean, this is what we're up against as, you know, representing the owner and the ownership. It is difficult as far as being economically viable with that building, the way it's currently situated. We've sat with it for years now, we've lowered the rents, we've talked to different groups. We continue to have a number of retail uses which approach us, but we have to turn them down. The two uses most recently, which I thought would be fantastic but are not allowed, one was a medical office. Now, you can do a specific doctor office there, but the moment you put in a lab or something like that, it becomes medical and it's not allowed by zoning. So we had a dental practice that wanted to go in, but they wanted to have an oral surgeon as well and have some laboratory, and that was not going to be permitted. So I thought, that seemed like a kind of a use in context with the neighborhood that would make sense in thinking about other uses. Another one was a, an entrepreneur came and approached me, and she had an idea for a day spa that would include different services for, you know, it would be a high-end day spa with a salon, nails, hair, and other things, where you could go and massage and have this women's day spa, she called it, and then, you know, shop in Concord. I thought that was kind of a great idea, that if it was used, you know, properly, it could be a great fit, but those aren't uses that are allowed in today's zoning. We've had health, you know, yoga studios that have wanted to go in, they're not allowed to go in. So they're just, there's a limited use. It's LB-two, and when it was put in, it was very, very restrictive. I would really encourage you all, and you've already said that, that you might consider looking at this in the broader context of use, not only of height. And I'll just finalize by saying, you know, we've looked at this as well. We've done our own studies of trying to figure out, given the current height in zoning. We've had Stamsky McNary, a planner, take a look at this and show us what we think we might be able to do. And it's interesting, we came up with similar type concepts to this. But when we keep doing it, and I think the open space being a limiting factor there, the parking, the open space, really crimps that. And I think that you have to remember all the different constraints on the site. You've got historic district, and you have, it is in a floodplain and in the conservation district. So in developing this on a point-four-four acre parcel that you're trying to get potentially four units or something, the economics are really, really difficult because of the cost of going through all these things, the uncertainty of not knowing then if you do, to speculate on that. But then even the building costs and what we look at for what we could get for those either apartments or for them if they were to be condominiumized or something like that, the economics just don't seem to make sense unless you get to a much denser project. But, you know, again, that's for the board to decide what's appropriate for this parcel. But those are all good things, and I hope you continue to think about them, because we're sitting here saying, help us out, please help us and get us, you know, something. And I think even the use would be a great place to start, so thank you.
Yeah.
With the, I'm sorry, Mr. Snell?
Yes.
With these contemplated uses, the two examples that you gave us of a woman's spa, which I think should be, I think should be open to men too.
She self-described that, as that I was not.
The medical, the medical use. Was the contemplating idea there to build a new building in the same footprint, like something that looks like this, or was it to actually reuse that existing building?
Just to reuse the existing one. All those uses were. It's very expensive, if you're going to tear something down, you'd have to, you know, point it out. If you're going to build basically the same footprint back, it's economically not viable.
Okay, next then.
Sorry, just clarifying question then, I guess. So if, say, you have basically approval at this point to do something like H-one-A, it sounds like that's still not economically viable. So is it like getting two more units and changing the use, or one or the other will work? Like, what, how do you think about that?
Well, if you want, I can come back to you and tell you what I'd like to do. But I don't know, I mean, this is a, you know, we're in a community that has a lot of voices, and I'm sure that, you know, there's, there are different opinions.
But it sounds like H-one-A was not.
Yeah, I think it's really challenging, even what you show right there, to make something that would be cost-effective to then get the return on that investment.
Okay, next comment.
Lola Chase on seventy-seven Walden Street. And my question, I think Travis would have asked it, did you, you apparently didn't consider the height levels on the lot. Did you consider, were you, were you tasked with considering the form plan and what you were thinking about? And one other comment based on his is, actually, I don't think he's. And one other comment based on his is, actually, I don't think he's too far off on it. He's a little bit off, I think, but not too far.
From this angle, I could get the back, yeah. If we were looking at it from the other angle, it might look different.
I have a photograph.
Yeah.
You know, we based the height measurements we had on photographs, but as I say, if there is a resource that has one of the historic building heights for the Performing Arts specifically, I'll take a look at that and can add it in.
We can see if we have that.
But your posts' approach is partly to deal with the floodplain issue, correct?
Yeah, the, using the existing structure would be one of the ways to, I think, pursue a construction redevelopment project that, given the floodplain and how it is, I'm not sure where, how far into the property the floodplain encroaches.
Yeah, yes.
Probably straight to the curb.
Well, you must have got it, son.
If the, if a redevelopment could occur within the existing footprint and improvements could be made on the site conditions as they are today in regard to the floodplain, then that might be seen as a project which would be improving the current conditions of the property, in which case it might, might be favorably reviewed.
Yeah, so the current building.
Put up your back door.
Okay, and the other comments from the public, yes, sir?
Peter Lee, one forty Walden Street. Just a quick impression, one of you commented that the scale of this H1 design looks pretty good. To my eyes, it looks huge, because frankly, I do walk on that pathway, which is an easement between Walden Street and Terran Church and then First Parish in the back. If I were going to First Parish, whether to see Paul Revere's ride, or if I were going to church, I walk through that path back and forth, and I'm not the only one. And from that path, right now, you could look over the roof of this building, see some skies, some trees. And from Walden Street, you could see the steeple of First Parish very clearly, it's large. And the same from that towards this direction. So, these two steeples are sort of markers, and this building blocks it up, that's my impression.
Other public comment? Yes?
Charlie Parker, one oh five Chestnut Street. I, you know, I heard the question about, does this really solve the problem? I thought that was a kind of interesting point. There's been a lot of talk about housing units, and, you know, I think that's desirable. But the sense I get is that there's some kind of disconnect between what Travis is talking about and you're specing out this notion of housing units. It sounds like it's not all that attractive from a financial point of view to put in housing, unless I'm not hearing this correctly. And I remember from the several meetings ago, I think the point was made that you really couldn't make a go of the housing. Now, maybe that's changed, maybe I didn't hear this right, but that's kind of what I got out of it. So, I guess the other side of the question would be, you know, if you go with H1B and he builds a two-story building, could the whole thing be, be whatever use that is allowed? Could it be that use, let's say, they already have professional office use as a use that's permitted? Without changing any use, could both, all three floors be professional office use? And forget about the housing, I mean, is that, you see, you remember the question?
Well, the parking requirements would have to be that, right.
You can't kind of say, well, half of it is for housing and half of it is for retail. You can't break this building up, so you're kind of stuck with him volunteering to do what you want. That's kind of a tough play, I think.
Any other public comment?
I'm Nancy Forcella Lee at one forty Walden Street. So, I have quite a lot to say, but I'm a little afraid to say, to be honest with you. I don't know who you are, I don't know if you were on the board when, when we've gone through this. Not, not you met, it was okay, because.
Me, Kate Mackey, I was not on the board, that's why I'm trying to get speed.
Okay, great. So, we have gone back and forth with this, and I, in particular, I gave a presentation. Our neighbors kind of formed a group, a discussion group about this. And we did a lot of analysis of the history and the history of why the site was pinned a limited business district. And we explained why, we read the letters, and then we, I gave a presentation with slides and explaining that that was the reason, I think it was in nineteen sixty, you can correct me, that it was a limited business district because they saw it as this area of transition that you spoke of, that it's a buffer zone. And I explained that we are neighbors, we are neighbors with historic houses. And there's a church across the street, a lot of green space in front. And next door is the Performing Arts Center, which is a historic building. And then, when you get to the town, all of the towns are right to the sidewalk. They order right on the sidewalk, there's not space behind. Do you see what I mean, that the doors are right on the sidewalk, there's not like a green front? The commercial district.
Correct.
And so, I explained that this building should never be that, because they foresaw that it should be a buffered zone to the neighborhood that's always going to be there, that's not going to change. And so, we're not, and I gave this long analysis, and then we talked about what the uses should be. And so, you were saying you would like to see that it, the board is saying that they, they might like to reconsider that issue, relook at that issue, but we did carefully look at that issue, I thought. So, every time we come back to this, we're sort of reinventing the wheel, I think. And we went, we had just sort of what I saw as a compromise of letting or not, and I sort of, it went to town meeting, and the owners, the current owners, did get the building raised. So, I, sorry, I don't know what the process is, if you're about to ask a question?
Yeah, so that's why I think there's information that the, I'll pull all that back together again, provide to the board. And my, you know, my correction is if there's any more questions for Josh, or we can cut him loose.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
And I'm just on.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I, I thought you had a question, that's all.
I did, but I think it's not, maybe not appropriate for me to ask. Right now, maybe she'll just let you finish your, your comments, please.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I can cut short, you know, what I, my feelings, I can write it in a letter, maybe that, because maybe this will be continued.
It will be continued.
I was also served on the HTC, so like how, when I see columns and decks and I, there's a historic building, everything is what's from the visual, you know, what they can see from the public pathway. I don't think this would be acceptable. I'm sad, I am a historian myself, I work a lot of issues of the old mans. I do understand, I've really tried to listen to what the owners have said. We've never talked personally, and it seems like that anytime any of the neighbors have tried to, they're not. I don't know, I've never tried to, I would like to. I don't know if that's appropriate to say here, but there are long-term issues for the town. And I feel that when they set that buffer zone, they have good reasons. And I don't see any reason, in my view as a historian, to change that. Every, in every public meeting, people probably get tired of me saying this. This is a historic town, but it's of national significance. I keep repeating with that, the old mans and this town, and I might not even live here for my whole life. But I still want to protect my town. And I just feel like, why are we always buying bigger and bigger and for economic viability? And again, I don't want to get personal, I don't know the owners. They've owned this since, I think, nineteen eighty-two, we've looked up how much they paid for it. I don't feel that, you know, when they talk about that they haven't been able to rent out the building, I believe that that's true, but, but I don't want to make it personal. Again, like not in my backyard, I don't want to come across as that kind of person, because it isn't my neighborhood, but I'm not really, that's not what I care for. I don't really, I'm not trying to protect my neighborhood. I'm just trying to protect the historic character of the town in Concord. And we can always go bigger. I don't know why sometimes we can't go less. Why couldn't they build, if they don't, building, it's a dated building, I don't like the building either. I would love it to see them, you know, put a nicer building. You could, why couldn't we say revert it back to residential space? Put it in our residential, it's just one house. Our neighbors are selling the house because they're upset about this. I know I'm very emotional about it, but I just feel like, you know, this optimization, this word optimization vibrancy, why, what is the town really going to lose? Okay, if you, you know, if you want to get apartments, if you really, I know that's really long-term planning, that you want more vibrancy downtown, there are other ways to do that, maybe. Why this particular property that's been, as you said, you said you revisit every generation? Are we always going to do more and more? When are we going to just say, it was right in the beginning? Or maybe we can go backwards, this was, this is historic land. It's green space, you look down, I'm going to stop. Thank you for listening.
You can put your thoughts in a letter, if you'd like, and there will be another opportunity.
If you have, if you do write a letter, and you do, do you still have your presentation that you?
You can go and then.
Have it all.
Yeah, we've got all, we'll just, we'll just, and I think it was nineteen fifty, not nineteen sixty.
I think we made it in a business.
But anyway, is there any more public comment? Okay, thank you.
Just one question while you're here, while we've got you. So, we, you looked at the, at adding residential to second floors, just doing the math in my head, but if you could confirm, if that was to be office space on, say, the second floor, that would be about twice the number of required parking spaces, I would guess, so.
Yeah.
And any proposal, if you were adding a second floor and limiting it to commercial under the current use, you'd need to find additional parking, right? And I think you said you had three extra spaces.
Yeah, I think that's correct. If you, for one floor of commercial use, it's overparked, but if you add a full another floor of commercial use, you wouldn't have enough parking on the site.
Okay.
So, you'd have to look at, I don't know if remote parking is allowed, I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with.
You'd need to come up with something.
Or get relief from parking.
Be relieved, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so I think at this point, we'll continue the discussion, we'll take it up at a subsequent meeting. We'll, after getting more opportunity, review the context and see if there's anything more that we'd like to do. Thanks very much, by the way, this is very helpful to get further information.
If there are other questions, I'd be happy to answer, Elizabeth has my contact.
Yeah, and I will see what we have on file as far as the height.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bring it back to you. We do want to change one render.
Yeah. Update it and send it back.
Thanks.
Okay, so if you're leaving at this point, please exit the building entirely in order not to disrupt a meeting with conversation, okay? Thank you, and then, let's move on to our approval not required plan. Seven ninety Barrett Mill Road.
Who was it? We're gonna, we gotta move on to other business.
We're gonna continue our discussions of other points in the meeting, so. I apologize for. Okay.
So, this is Barrett Mill Road Rotary, this way. Right about here is the Grove Street. And Grove Street sits around, back closer to the Rotary. This is the large house with the tennis court in back, tennis building, pool, poolhouse, old gazebo. They've recently removed a bunch of trees in the interior of the lot, but they are effectively dividing the lot down the middle. The zoning line bisects the property. The area up front is Residence A. The residence in the back is Residence Double A.
And that's a drainage ditch, not a.
This is, correct, this has been classified as a drainage ditch, and it's not.
So, it could just be filled in?
It's not, it's not regulated as a wetland.
Okay. Okay.
So, while both lots have over eighty thousand square feet, they only have a hundred and, about a hundred and fifty-one feet of frontage. So, they only meet the frontage requirement for the Residence A zoning district. Existing houses here, a new house would be limited to being built in this area, because it is only considered a building lot by Residence A standards. So, my recommendation is that the board can endorse this plan as approval not required, but do recommend the inclusion of a note on the plan before the plan gets endorsed regarding that building requirement.
There's no implication caused by the existing non-conformity of the setback of the building on the lot?
What, the existing building?
Yeah, I mean, since you're dividing the property, it's not reevaluating that.
It's not, it's not making, it's not making this building more non-conforming, no.
Right, okay, okay. All right. Then, I think we have some language here, anyone like to read it?
So, so just to be clear, we would be creating a second legal lot, but it would, you would need to be built, you would need to build within.
The Residence A zone, correct.
Residence A zone.
Yep.
And, and that would be enforced by the building permit?
Correct.
Okay.
But I felt it's appropriate for whoever purchases the property.
To be, to be put on the notice.
No, it was currently purchased by a developer, but.
Yeah, so, they already know, but, yeah. Okay.
I may have missed it, but I feel like that does.
What is the monument?
Is it?
Right, square in the middle of it?
I thought it was a gazebo, but I don't know.
Nothing of significance, though.
No, I thought it was, I thought it was a gazebo, but that's.
I just tried to put on the street view.
Okay, anyone want to read the, if you can, just go do the honors?
I make a motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion to planning board should move to endorse the plan for Jeffrey G. Cronin, trustee of Barrett Mill Road Realty Trust, date December tenth, twenty nineteen, as approval not required, because division of the tract, the land shown on the plan is not a subdivision, because Lot One and Lot Two have the required area and frontage for Residence A zoning district as required by the Concord zoning bylaw, and conditioned upon the inclusion of a note to the plan stating, the development of a single-family dwelling on Lot One or Lot Two shall be restricted to the portion of the lot located within the Residence A zoning district, and authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to endorse the plan.
All right. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Got any other doubts? So, now we're moving to the annual.
What, what time are we here? I got here about seven fifty-five, okay.
Okay, we're ready to talk about our draft, public hearing presentations for a town meeting for the warrant articles we're bringing to the table. All right, let's see, how do we organize this? I don't know if we want to go through one after the other, or if we just say, hey, well, so a couple of things we have to do. First of all, are the drafts reasonable? Do we feel like you could take them and run with them if you're the presenter, okay? And realizing that we don't have another meeting scheduled between now and the public hearing, except for our public forum for the Thorough Depot.
Really?
So, unless we want to.
What is town meeting?
Town, no, this is not a town meeting, this is our public hearing, which is on the twenty-fifth. And so, what's happening in February is our first scheduled meeting, which is on the eleventh, is becoming this public forum on Thorough Depot. And our second typical scheduled meeting is the public hearing. So, between now and then, unless we carve out a little bit of time, we don't have any time to do anything else with these, okay? Now, I actually do suggest that maybe we huddle, you know, a half hour before the public forum or something, so that, you know, we can review any edits to drafts that people make after tonight, after they take ownership, you know, and say, I'm going to, you know, present this as a public hearing. And then, we could finalize the presentations then, and then carry them into the public hearing. That's, that's what I'd suggest, but.
I recall in years past, having the opportunity, once it had been assigned, to sort of look at your, at the presentation in terms of how. in terms of how you would present the presen- I, I would present the presentation providing edits to Elizabeth, are we going, doing that process?
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Mention the type guideline, and if you want to feedback from other people also.
I mean, look, that's, that's the thing I would say, by the way, is if you're, if our sense as a board is that the draft presentations are in good enough shape that it's really just tweaking words here and there, we don't need to meet again on them, right? It's just that if they're off base, then that's something, you know, that we would need to check back in.
Once we choose or get assigned, depending on what goes out, which ones we're going to do.
Yeah.
I mean. Voluntarily. Exactly. Wouldn't we be able to then, you know, if we make any of those types of edits, share them with the two of you, since you're the chair and you're the town, you know?
We could do that.
Then, and then ask the feedback that we would use.
That'd be the feedback.
That doesn't, we don't need the full board input.
He probably wouldn't do it anyways, so.
Okay, that sounds great, I'm fine with that, if, again, as long as we don't have any that are way off.
Well, I mean, I, like, depending on what I'm presenting, I might have, like, I don't know how, I, I'm not gonna look at it. If I'm presenting, I'm looking at it a different way, but I assume it would be minor, but.
Should we?
So it's.
Should we get to that at first?
Yeah, let's go to that part, exactly.
Figure out who's doing what, a volunteer for.
Yeah.
So we ended up with eight, eight articles, correct?
Yes, we have eight articles, we have seven board members.
Well, it's okay, and then to, wanna fill them in on the process of the public hearing versus, you know, what happens to the public hearing, and then.
Yeah, so at the public hearing, you know, we have more time to present the content, so these, is, in particular, the three presentations I've put together are pretty verbose, okay?
Yeah.
And, but the idea is that the public hearing is the chance for the public to give feedback. Now, of course, we had our public forum and everything, but just even in a more formal sense, the public hearing is the place where we're presenting this to the public, they have the opportunity to get feedback, and as long as we can stay within the scope of the article, we can make changes. Because we can.
To the presentation or to the article itself?
To the article itself, if it's within, if the moderator rules it as in scope. So for example, we might decide in the PRDs that of the big laundry list of stuff we wanna do, one of them, we're gonna strike. We can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's the objective of the public hearing, is to tune stuff up, so that when we walk into the town meeting, it's a high five and everybody.
Do we strike it at the public?
It becomes part, it becomes part of the motion.
No, no. The motion at town meeting.
At town meeting.
Right, so we have a chance, after the public hearing, we can say, okay, we heard all this.
No, I understand.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not gonna do this, we'll change that, and.
Or you could withdraw it, if it was controversial.
We could withdraw the whole thing if we.
Another important element of it is that the town moderators, they're gauging the bite based upon the reaction in the room and her view as to whether things would be put on the consent calendar or not.
Which, which means?
So what it means is if it goes on the consent calendar, essentially gets voted, it's a block.
It's a bump.
And you do not present on it, because it's considered non-controversial, so it's oftentimes these things where it's, we're fixing this typo.
Philanthropic uses for fairs, okay, that one's a, like, shoo-in for being on the consent calendar.
The fairs, the government's tab.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I took one of them last year, and then we didn't end up going on.
But at the public hearing, we have to present them all, okay?
From what we think, whatever, yeah, so that's the main thing, is that we're presenting all of them at the public hearing, we get the feedback,
So including the ones that might end up there.
And then shortly after, I can't remember, I can't remember when she decides, but then they said, okay, we recommend, the moderators said, we recommend, you know, these two being on the consent calendar.
You don't, you don't recommend.
Not we, I mean, the moderators.
The moderators.
Moderator's the one that sets, sets the consent.
Yes, but I'm just saying, so we'll, we'll hear back.
And then at the beginning of the town meeting, someone could take it off of the consent calendar if they did, if they think, no, it's, it is controversial.
Yeah.
So we have to be prepared to be able to present it.
Right, which we would, because we had already presented it.
Yeah.
The public hearing.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to do tonight, is divvy these up, and also just tune up our draft presentations so that we're all feeling okay, and that only, you know, with a few edits and checking in with me and Elizabeth, and you'd be ready to present.
Two-family.
That you're big enough?
You want two-family? Because we, I did that at the.
But wait a second, but I would like to say that if I assign something, I wanna reserve the right to do more than
Yeah, you.
Minor edits after this meeting.
Yeah, and I think that.
To the presentation, not to the, not to the.
Presentation.
Yeah, to the presentation.
And that's fine for the public hearing, remember that if it's in the, if it's in the town meeting, there's a time limit.
So Kate, here's the.
We're just talking about the public hearing right now.
Here's the process I would recommend, that if you take one of these, you feel the need to make extensive edits, you can review them with, with me and, and Elizabeth. If we feel that they're, like, substantive enough, or problematic, or whatever, that we all need to get together, we would get together on, let's say.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yeah, you definitely have the option.
But that, what that behooves you to do is, if you're, to tweak those drafts between now and, let's say, February fourth.
Perfect.
Okay?
Love it.
That's what I'd suggest, get, get your final draft presentations by February fourth, how about that?
And keep in mind, the presentation is not necessarily everything you say.
Don't worry, I'm not gonna write a lot off.
Okay.
No, I just mean, you know.
I know, no, I know.
There's the charts that go on the wall, and then there's what you say in explaining the charts.
I know it's different. I know it is different.
Okay, and, you know, we, the, the other thing about the public hearing is, you know, while we do have more time than a town meeting, which is just incredibly short, uh, these are usually fairly brief.
Right, 'cause there's a lot that.
You really just pounded through it, and then, you know, people are gonna.
They'll hear the discussion.
Yeah.
This one always has a right to make something that's more than an, like a comma, to.
Yeah.
Yeah, like he considers material after this.
That's coming.
Okay.
I bet it would have no commas that wouldn't be fixing.
All right.
So shall we?
Yeah.
Raise our hands for which presentation?
Okay, so I'm gonna say the, the board decided that members would review their draft presentation, make edits and changes to be reviewed by the chair and the town planner, and if, if it was felt that it was substantive, that I will coordinate with the rest of the board to have, to have the board review.
Yes, at a, at a notice meeting.
At a notice meeting.
I think you accurately wrung that out of that.
Thank you. Look at, that was only two paragraphs.
And we're gonna try to get it to you by February fourth.
Oh, by February fourth.
Yeah, I think that that would be a good target.
Okay.
Okay, so, now Nathan has blurted out his preference. We don't have all our members here, so Alan.
Give Alan the.
Alan gets the PRD.
I think Alan gets the PRD one, what do you think?
Why do you think I showed up and that I'd be late?
I, I would raise my hand for either accessory dwelling units or the Throde Depot Business District re-jiggering. I like two-family, but Nate, I think you've got that in hand. Anybody else?
It's.
I'd like to do PRD, I could do PRD.
And you can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're comfortable, yeah, you wanna do PRD?
Guess what?
Well, I figure I should do one of the housing ones, if, you know, I, it just.
Yeah, I think, I think that's.
I think that the PRD, it's gonna be a blast through a lot of stuff, and, and there's, the other thing you have to think about is the, the Q and A.
It's gonna just field a lot of questions.
Yeah, forget it, we're all.
So when the Q and A, I mean, it's really not so much the presentation.
All right, we talked about it, I don't really want to do anything else.
No, I think, I think it's good for him to do this year, 'cause you need to.
I'm new.
But I'm just saying, you're new to the whole.
Yeah, I don't really wanna do anything else.
Oh.
Well, you'll find something.
So, so you can give me something that nobody else wants to do.
How about you do Hammerhead Lots?
All right, so you heard Haley say she'd take two billion.
She's billionaire.
Trust me, trust me, take Hammerhead Lots.
I thought I was here to do Hammerhead a lot.
At least, at least at fairs.
Okay.
I don't wanna do that one with the trailers, it's just ridiculous.
Oh, I thought we, I thought we took that off.
Prohibited uses? No.
No, we're doing, what we took off was the fences and walls, okay?
Oh, yeah, we did take that one off.
And I think that, the Q and A on that one could be brutal, so I think that.
And we removed.
On the trailers?
No, the fences and walls, so the trailers.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Was Q and A restricted to whoever presents, or?
Oh, good question.
No, no, others could jump up, no, and Elizabeth probably will, if certain, certain things, yeah.
Yeah, well, you got, there's lifelines for sure, and in town meeting, it's, it's sometimes town council.
Yeah.
And like, there's so.
Yeah.
Or the findings.
Uh, what else we got left?
So, we have, I got to pick one.
Accessory dwelling, who has, so are you doing accessory dwelling?
I, I would be happy to, and unless somebody else is happy for that.
If anyone has passion for accessory dwelling.
Well, you have accessory dwelling, Throde Depot, and prohibited uses, and relief from parking.
How about I'll, I'll take accessory dwelling?
Okay.
For fifty.
All right, I can take Throde Depot, I guess.
Do we all have to take something?
Yes, thank you for asking.
That is.
Traditional.
Tradition, but it's not mandatory?
Sure is. Yeah, but I mean, like.
It's good, it's a good experience.
Yeah, there's, and there's nothing this terrible here.
Yeah. So, okay, so we got accessory dwelling, two-family.
What do you think Alan would like to do?
Nothing.
Hammerhead Lots.
He could do Hammerhead.
What's left, what are we still?
Relief from parking and prohibited uses, but we'll give Alan prohibited uses.
Well, the Throde Depot map, who's got the Throde Depot map?
I, I was gonna take that one, but he can, I can, I, I can trade, so.
Oh, you did, okay, Kristen's got that, yeah. So someone's gotta take two.
Yeah, what, with the, what's the, I can look at what the relief from parking is again.
It's double up ones that are consent.
Adding the criteria.
Adding the criteria, that's also probably gonna go consent in outer.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy to give her an easy one, I don't even know what you guys are talking about.
It seems like you guys are taking care of the hard ones, if you wanna give me another easy one.
Um, relief from parking. Um, what, I don't know what that, what's.
That's not in the six criteria.
Relief from parking on what? Wait, where are you?
Relief from parking is to apply the criteria that we've been informing.
That's where we have the criteria that we applied, that they, informally, and then we're gonna put it in the bylaw.
I'm not hearing you guys, it's your time. All right, anyways, I'm just doing. Yeah, I thought that one would too, you guys are not foreseeing a lot of questions with the.
All you have to say is parking.
Yeah, that's what I was.
No, no, but I, I think you should take it, Kristen.
I don't think there's going to be.
You should do the two, you should do the, the Throde Depot map and the parking.
I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Really from parking.
People, yeah.
You're gonna do the business oriented ones.
Okay.
All right, there you go.
I like, I like having a theme.
Yeah.
Haley has fairs.
Fairs.
Oh, you have fairs.
Fairs.
Okay.
Which is the best.
Throde Depot, fairs, and Haley, Alan's doing prohibited uses, Kate, Hammerhead Lots, two-family, Nathan, and are we presenting it in this order?
It'll get presented, however, it is listed in the warrant.
Um, but is it listed based on?
And that's another topic.
Bylaw.
It's not a topic.
We can't talk about?
So, the town moderator, the town moderator and select board chair, correct? Well, it, the, the order of the warrant was being discussed and set this afternoon.
Okay.
But I can tell you that there are three warrant articles associated with PRDs, citizen petitions, and those will be placed after the planning board's warrant article.
Three other articles?
After, or immediately after?
Oh, good question.
Following ours, or just sometime after that? Can we not discuss that?
Typically, they, they, it's either going to be immediately after our PRD, the board's PRD bylaw, or after all of the zoning amendments, that I don't know. But I do know that the three petition articles dealing with PRD will be after the board's warrant article dealing with PRD.
But why can't we, as the planning board for our zoning articles, have a preferred order?
That's, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
The, how the warrant gets set has always been the town moderator, it has not been a public, a public document or a public.
It doesn't.
No, I, I approached the town moderator about public works articles some months ago, and she told me that the select board sets the order of the warrant, not moderator.
Would it be appropriate to, for the chair to email?
I think I, I'll at least make, as a public, as a citizen, I'll make them what order I would prefer to see the planning articles.
What's a citizen?
Well, 'cause I can't speak for the board, because we can't make this the top.
You can make it, it's, it's not, it's not.
Alan's authorized not to speak on the.
No, we're not gonna.
And I think, I think it would just be as a matter of efficiency, and where, you know, how.
Yeah, I mean, we had an order that we presented at our, well, zoning initiatives, it wasn't all the articles, but, you know, I do think that it, there's a natural kind of progression, and the, the draft warrant that I saw was not logical at all.
Um, my, my opinion is that it's in your prerogative as chair to suggest to somebody.
I think I would try.
Now, we can pick the order in the public hearing, right?
That's our hearing.
Okay, so, so why don't you sample, yeah, the public hearing that we're doing in February is, so do we?
But I mean, we normally would do it in the order as printed in the warrant, so.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, 'cause I was thinking we could just.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't think that the select board has meant yet to set the order of the warrant, so.
What would you do first? You'd probably do PRD last.
I would do it after the accessory dwelling and the two-family.
Yeah.
And I would put the housing-related articles together, and, and then the business-related ones. So.
So how about the, the board discussed a logical order of the warrant, of the articles for the public hearing, and forward that suggestion to the select board.
Okay.
What would that order be?
Well, I don't, why is it in the prerogative as a chair to just, to, to suggest an order of those, I don't see why we have to, or why we have to make it a big deal?
Because, so at least for, for this, the public hearing is the planning board's public hearing. It is, state law requires it, so I think if the board has a preference on how they want to set your zoning articles for the mandatory statutory public hearing, that that should be discussed as a board.
Okay.
Yeah, so my suggestion would start with the accessory dwelling, then move to the two-family, which is, you know, where you can riff off of what's going on with the accessory dwelling, and then do the PRD to round out the, you know, the direct housing-related articles. And then from there.
You wanna jump right in with all the big fun stuff?
Yeah, and then.
Keep the crowd.
And then there, move to the Hammerhead Lot, because that, like the PRD, is changing us to be the permit granting authority. And then after that, I don't have such strong opinions, I would say probably go to the, um, to the relief from parking, 'cause that's kinda changing just a procedural thing, and then the Throde Depot map, and then the fairs.
Sounds good to me.
I, I, I concur.
All right, do we wanna talk about the substance of what's in the, uh, these presentations, or are we just gonna provide the individualized feedback?
No, I think that this is our opportunity as a group to talk about that.
So my suggestion, then, moving the Hammerhead Lot, I think would be great to have a picture or a diagram of what a Hammerhead Lot is, 'cause I still don't even know, I agree with all the times we've talked about it.
So. That's fine, but that's not the purpose of, of the warrant article, so I'm, I'm reluctant to include, the, the warrant article is just to change the permit granting authority from planning board to board of appeals.
I, I get that it's super limited in scope, but, I, I mean, even as a member of the planning board that's looked at this a bunch, I look at it and I think, what in goodness?
Which is fine, I just, I just, I just put, I just put the caution out there that when you, when, when you start to introduce something that's not part of the warrant conversation, that.
Okay.
So, but I can, I can add, I can add a graphic to the presentation.
I think one thing that would support Burton in this is that this is likely to go on the consent calendar at town meeting. And so really, at the public hearing, we've got time to deal with any kind of dissonance around, like, no, this isn't about changing what a Hammerhead Lot is, or, you know.
Or, or why.
Whether we allow them.
Why they're granted special permits?
Yeah, exactly, but this is just about who's granting it, but first of all, people do need to know what it is.
Okay, I can do that.
Any other comments on other presentations?
Wait, that was the presentation?
Yes.
Would you, would you like?
Public presentation does say.
No, no, that was the, the warrant article, down below, the.
The warrant. Kate, would you like a second one? Do you feel gypped?
No, I don't, I don't even understand, I don't even understand, like, PRDs I understand, but this I don't understand, so if anyone has a question, so I just wanna team, who's gonna answer, you, you?
Well, but you have to do it like now and whatever.
We, we want to answer questions.
I do, but.
We're, we're, okay, we'll, we'll answer your questions.
Research all of the times, the EBA has ruled on them.
But perhaps you would prefer one that is more intuitive, I mean.[1779.04]
No, I like the hammerhead, I like the name of it, it's a sharp.
I mean, we could give it, okay, alright.
I don't have any, I don't.
So any other comments on these? Again, we could open up each one of them.
I haven't looked through them yet, but yeah, I thought we were kind of doing that offline.
I feel like while we're here, just, you know, make sure everybody's.
Yeah, just while we're here and able to talk as a group, that's the thing, it's a special opportunity we have at this moment.
Okay, well, I have a comment on the PRD one.
Okay.
It's a really general comment, um, and despite that everyone thinks I always expand everything, I thought this was actually a lot in one presentation to digest, so I was gonna have some suggestions on it, making actually fewer words overall.
Okay.
Shocking to, to some of you who think I am so expansive always in everything I do, so, I don't, but I can, if you agree with that Matt, and you're like, well, what's your suggestion, I'd, I'd be happy to send, like, work on that and send it to you.
Send, send me suggestions, yeah.
Okay.
Um, you know, again, the approach I took for the public hearing was to be all inclusive, um, with the idea that, you know, any kinds of questions come up, we've got it right there at our fingertips. But at the town meeting, there would be absolutely no way to get through this presentation.
I see.
The moderator would never give you enough time to get through all this.
I think, I think that graph, um, the chart is good on the seventh slide, just get over.
Yeah. You wanna scroll down?
In PRD?
Yeah, scrolling down to the chart, there's the, there, there you go, well, yeah.
This one? I mean, I mean, I think it's.
This was just, you know, taking the spreadsheet summary, I added the last two PRDs into it, and then.
Do you, Haley, do you look at that and be like, why are we at fifty percent?
I mean, well, in a way, I think it will elicit the same response that we got at the zoning initiatives breakout session, which was overwhelmingly, what's thirty-five percent gonna do, but you know, that's fine. I was just gonna say, I think at some point Elizabeth, I, I was having trouble with the spreadsheet that this came from and like, keep quality controlling the, the exact math, but it might be that sort of wetlands definition loophole that we are closing, and that's why I couldn't square the math, but I was having. Trouble in general mapping, mapping this data.
Well, I think there was one example where there was like a hundred and something percent open space, yeah, but I corrected that, I corrected that one.
Yeah, that one, that's.
What is that, that's what I just heard, what is that one?
But it's still up there, it's almost.
No, there is one that's very high, no, there's one that is very high.
It's like ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
I don't expect that chart to be open space.
But. You don't think it's helpful?
I don't, I really don't.
Well, because I think you're trying to say, you know, well, how much open space do they currently have with these PRDs? Do, do they normally have five percent open space most, or you know, the minimum of twenty-five percent?
Do we? Do we still have the comparison in here of like the other towns, or?
It's, it's mentioned.
I've mentioned it, I just said the other towns range from thirty to forty percent.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I think maybe to what you were trying to say earlier, it is, one response might be that this isn't doing enough then.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, great, so we're not really moving anything.
It should be at sixty percent, why isn't it, you know, that's what it.
I'm not, I'm not saying I agree with that, I'm just saying, looking at that, if I do nothing else, walking in, and saw we were moving ten percent.
But there's a couple PRDs that don't provide any open space, and those are not there.
Well, I didn't put up there, I should have put an asterisk, that's a good point, uh, the asterisk is that it, it's ones that were affordable housing driven, I took out the ones where the majority of the units were affordable housing.
Those are out there.
Cause they have exceptions in the bylaw anyway, around open space, they're not, they're not, they're not subject to these restrictions.
We should show.
I think if our goal is to get people to persuade people that we should increase to thirty-five percent, I do not think that this chart is helpful there.
Well, I had a different chart that rather than.
I don't have a chart, just, just, let's just say we're gonna increase from eighty-five to thirty-five, let's just say that on the chart.
And you think hearing that is more powerful than.
People are gonna be powerful than.
I do, because they're gonna be, oh, but I do, thirty-five is not too much, but it's um, cause the, um, the loss, it's just not, it's hard to understand what the data's saying without really understanding these projects.
So another way that I did it was versus acreage, um, so rather than, you know, make the horizontal axis be the year, I just did, okay, based upon the acreage of the site, what percentage of open space was provided? And then have the twenty-five or thirty-five percent there, and so, just try to plug this guy in, maybe on the other side. Yes.
Yeah, and I, to your point, I think presenting like a moderate increase and it's more in line with neighboring towns, like that's pretty enough.
Okay, here goes. Okay, so see this acreage is along the bottom, and percentages along, are going up, and so you can see that, you know, sub-ten acre parcels, you know, are where you start to see the lower amounts, right? And that the thirty-five basically creates a, I don't know, I, I think it, maybe it would look more like the right kind of relationship.
I still don't know that that, that is the same thing, it's like, again, you're not, you're not moving, you know, correct, enough that is pushing more.
I agree with their perception and how it might be perceived by.
By the public, it's not enough, not doing enough. Okay, well, we could just pull it. I mean, I, I don't think that, well, first of all, the moderator ruled out of order, we tried to increase by more than thirty-five percent, that's out of scope for the art.
I don't think we should pull it. I don't think we should pull it.
No, no, he's gonna take the chart.
Yeah, okay.
Pull the chart.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
That's interesting, thank you for, that's so interesting how you did that to look at that.
Yeah, I just did a couple of different dimensions just to see, you know, um, and I just thought that the, the timeline or based approach kind of, I mean, if you did a, there was a gap, right, in the, in the nineties, where there just wasn't anything, right? But since then, you can see there's, like, if you did a trend line, it's starting to trend down, okay, and so what we wanna do is say, okay, I mean, I think it's persuasive.
True, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but see, that would be more, yeah, that was, would be an important housing, would be mandatory.
You could, you could add in that trend line, say you're trying to.
A trend line, but it would be a partial trend line, yeah.
Yeah, and, and.
That's fine, but you could still say you're trying to keep it from.
See, what I'm trying to say is.
What's fifty acre PRD?
Huh?
What's the fifty acre PRD?
Oh gosh, I forget one of this.
That's covered.
Fifty acres?
Well, there are twenty-eight acres that were donated to the town, or twenty-nine.
I don't think it was built on twenty something.
Okay, so, um.
And then you, do you have other suggestions now about um streamlining?
So you don't, so you think with the trend line, or maybe should I just ditch it, just ditch it, okay?
I would.
I, I mean, in general, I, I think the purposes of town meeting, the graphs could get sort of off the end, so better verbal.
Okay.
I mean, again, I just note the reaction to the table of comparing Concord to other neighboring towns and zoning initiatives.
You think that would go further?
I think everybody was like, wow, Concord's the lowest.
Yeah, so I could also do a chart like that, I mean, it would just be a scale, and it would just show different towns as us.
Now. Now, there could be an amendment on the floor for, uh, and not at the public hearing, but a citizen could say, I want to amend that to, instead of thirty-five percent, forty-five percent?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, I just wanna be sure, so.
You can make things less restrictive, you can't make them more restrictive.
But, um, but we don't know what the citizen, um, there's, well, we will once the warrant comes out, is published, which is.
PRD ones are.
No, but, well, I've seen the draft warrant, and it says basically a moratorium on doing PRD, um, stuff for a year.
There's one petition is a, just a, a moratorium, um, so, um, Riverwalk two won't get, um, if they file Riverwalk two, then. Um, potential PRD next to Riverwalk one.
Weird, weird.
Well, anyway, that's.
Anyways. Is the warrant on, on available publicly on the town's website, all the stuff that's gonna be in there, even if it's not the order that it will be in there?
No, no, citizens.
No.
Is it coming?
Uh, no, soon.
Soon, that's in January actually, right?
And then there's two, um, citizen petitions dealing with PRD and requiring signs to be posted on the property.
That's right. Okay.
And do those require their own public hearings?
No, they'll be at our public hearing.
Because there's zoning bylaw amendments, they'll be at your public hearing, they'll, the citizens won't be required to make a presentation.
Okay, so they'll be at, oh, okay.
And then once that happens in a subsequent meeting, we'll decide what our position is on those articles. Yeah. Once we hear about them at the public hearing.
When do we, given, well, I guess we do have meetings after that to make that determination.
Right.
You do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, our, our public hearing is really kind of early, and our, our town meeting is kind of late, so, yeah.
This is the first time I can remember where you've only had two meetings between the time the warrant closes and the time you have your public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty tight, that's why I hustled on those presentations, cause I thought without them, we'd be. Up against it, okay, anything else on these? Alright, well, uh, I think we've got our assignments and can get to work on those, so now, um, let's talk about this memo that we received about capital, from the capital planning task force, about what capital planning items we wanna bring to their attention. And I think Elizabeth and I had similar reaction to this, which was that typically the planning board is not, you know, proposing capital projects, um, on the other hand, there are projects that we kind of sponsored, or, or that we've encouraged. And so I think the one that most comes to mind is the Assabett River footbridge, and so, you know, and that would have a capital impact on the town potentially, so I think we'd wanna highlight that project. But I couldn't think any others off the top of my head, you know, again, they're, they're projects that would hit the town's budget as opposed to in the private sector, so.
What are examples of previous, uh, projects?
Well, I mean, there's all kinds of things, I mean, schools and, you know, municipal buildings and all kinds of stuff, but the planning board is not usually the instigator.
From the planning board? Yeah.
I think, I, um, I think the Assabett River pedestrian bridge is the first real capital project that the planning board has.
Was there a grant for that? Wasn't there, didn't you hear about?
Yeah, but you, you told us.
A grant so far, or I can't.
Where it was going and everything.
Um, oh, was the citing of it, maybe something.
Well, there's funding in the CPC funding, I would have talked about that in one of my liaison reports.
Okay, I can, yeah.
Or proposed funding in this town meeting.
But I am looking at doing, um, Mass Trails Grant, which is due at the end of the month, um, to assist with the design and permitting.
Okay. And so then we would, um, communicate to this task force that it would be for construction?
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the capital impact potentially of the construction of the bridge, I'd say.
The construction side of the conversation we had was, um, hopefully, I'm gonna say by March, um, pulling together the required information for a project notification form, uh, to Mass DOT. To have the capital, the construction side of this project incorporated into the transportation improvement program, which is the state's capital plan for funding of roads, bridges, and transportation.
How far out do they plan?
Uh, it's a five-year revolving plan.
Alright, so, any, any other input on this? I mean, I think we, you, so we drafted memo.
Well, it's just that, um, typically the planning board does not, um, initiate, you know, capital, capital projects.
Right.
Um, however, the board has been working over the past few years on advancing the Assabett River pedestrian bridge, um, currently has, um, received CPA funding, was it last two years ago, and then, um, is.
Proposed for this year.
Um, is on the warrant for funding for this year for the permitting and design, um, and that there, there may be implications for, um, construction, capital construction.
Okay, and do we need a, a motion to write a letter of that form? No.
You can just directly to write that letter, and if one member wants to review it.
Okay. Sure, um, I'd be happy to review it.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, uh, the next is the logistics for the, uh, public forum coming up on the eleventh.
Logistics?
Yeah, so I think as Elizabeth outlined, the proposal was to do this kind of an open house between six-thirty and seven, uh, where people would just be able to have kind of mill out and have some discussion, and then. At seven o'clock to be a formal presentation from MAPC for about twenty minutes, and then have breakouts, so kind of similar to our thing, but maybe not doing two rounds of breakouts, and, um, I don't know, were they planning to come back together after the breakouts and do a summary like we did, or not?
Not sure yet.
Yeah.
And this would be led by MAPC, and we would be kind of helping facilitate the breakouts, is that what you're envisioning?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So there would be, um, different, um, breakout tables, um, and, I'll have my notes on. I don't have my notes for that, but, um, so obviously there's gonna, you know, would be, you know, transportation pedestrian area, um, uses and amenities, and then visual, um, visual characteristics, I think they're planning on having.
Visual preference. Um, and, and I can have this discussion on February eleventh, but you know, hearing recent discussion, you know, basically what we'd be proposing is that owners of these buildings invest a lot of money into making them bigger to help.
Well, essentially, we would create the zoning.
Right.
If, you know, if we zone it, they will build, instead of, if we, they build, they will come, so, uh, and, but yeah, we can't.
Oh, no, no, I know, but that's not what I heard earlier, is what I'm saying, when, when, when we were looking at the presentation for fifty-nine Walden, and I think the reaction was not, oh, great, I'm gonna invest money and build a larger building. So, I, I guess, I'm curious, uh, do we definitely, will we likely get the building owners? I'm not even sure.
So, at, at, at this time, um, I've sent, um, I have emails for four of the different, um, property owners, um, and the flyer has gone out to all property owners, and the flyer has gone out to all abutters within three hundred feet of the Throdeepo district.
Okay.
Um, the posters will go up in Monument Square and Junction Park tomorrow, um, and, you know, God willing, there's supposed to be something in the paper. It went out on news and notices, um, the flyer is also up on the peg, on the Minuteman Media Network, um.
Would you, would you like to know now which, which of these, uh, breakouts we'd like to assess with?
No, I just wanted, just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up, you know, be assisting.
But, uh, in theory, the next time we're getting together is there, so actually, it might help to get that straightened out.
Yeah, is, is.
Also, so just so I understand, the open house half hour, what do you envision happening in that period of time?
They'll, just the, um, different, um, posters, and, you know, there'll be just a informal table of, you know, what do you think, what are your ideas, um, just for people just to kind of come in.
So there may, like, there might be some visualizations or anything like that?
There'll be maps of the district, um.
So they'll just walk, okay, yeah, just walk around and take a look at it.
Yeah. Just walk around and take a look at. Have things, or if that, it'll be APCs put together.
Is, so this, for this, for the stations lists commercial uses, but is, um, residential, like, multi-use residential also being contemplated within the district?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so why is this limited at commercial uses? And do we wanna provide, do we want people to provide feedback on what type of residential uses in terms of it being? I think, I think it would, it would only be mixed business residential.
Which is currently permitted.
Oh, oh. I don't, I don't know, I don't, there's a lot that I, and I'm really interested in your question about, like, we can change the zoning, but is that, like, what, um, that doesn't mean that the proprietors are gonna be motivated to? Well, maybe, maybe the planners will, um, have some information about where this has worked, or why this is beneficial to both the property owners.
or why this is beneficial to both the property owners and to the neighborhood residents in, in the town, I don't know.
It may also motivate someone else to purchase the properties.
So this is, this is. This is the info, the information gathering forum to get all the information.
They're not, no answers.
They will come back after this with, with proposals and ideas.
Okay. And how, how is, how is the business district drawn right now? Is this the existing zoning?
That is.
Right, but we're redrawing it a little bit, but not quite a lot.
Only a little, right. Um, okay, thanks.
Yeah, you know, it extends to, to Crosby's and.
I think that sounds good. That's what I'm confused about, but I'm confused with the other side of the road.
Which is funny, cause I forget, I forget about that, with the other side of Crosby's?
Other side of.
The other side.
Or Sudbury?
Of Thero?
Yeah. Oh, here, I think it's great.
Let's show it to you.
What outdoor amenities or activities would improve the.
Something that's like shown in that, like at fourth and Thero.
I think the main part that people think about is the Crosby's Shopping Center area.
Oh, it's funny, I think about, I think about Thero Street because we were calling it Thero Depot. And, and I forget about the other, and it's all of it.
That's part of it, it's just like.
If we're doing, if we're going to help facilitate the special. And when you think about how much more Crosby's is and then mixed use or whatever, I mean, it's huge.
This won't come through on the table.
I'm picturing Thero Street, like putting a second floor on and calling it a day, but no, it's much, much bigger than what it could be.
Trying to come to a conclusion. Sorry, we're gonna have a long slide.
All right, so back to this.
In preparing for the, the roundtable, uh, this, this presentation, there's a lot of substantive stuff, I think, that's coming up that we'll hopefully learn more about at the roundtable, but just in terms of the logistics, to bring us back to that topic. The expectation is that we would each help facilitate the discussion at a roundtable?
Yes.
Will we have a list of, um, roundtable topics that we could maybe prep or frame our minds for in advancing?
I will ask for that.
Okay, that would be very helpful, because then, uh, while we might not have the time to actually assign particular topics to members, we could at least have the, have it in mind going into, going into the discussion.
Well, can, do you, can you guys assign us ahead of time?
You can, you guys can choose what you think.
How many planners will be there?
Um.
Do you think this says?
I imagine there's gonna be maybe four to six of them.
So, I mean, so they'll be at each of these roundtables too.
Correct.
So, I, I don't know that we're gonna have a very large role, except that we might be able to add anything specific to the town in terms of their.
So a list of roundtable topics and, and talking points, is that?
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, to make sure that we, you know, help those get the information that will help the next step.
We're looking at the stripe.
Yeah, the purple, the purply striped one is the Thero. Depot District. Why it doesn't include the whole entire parking lot at Crosby's, I don't know.
We should have done it.
Yeah, that's.
We missed our chance.
I didn't, I didn't see that one, so.
Oh, it's not too late to do it. That is odd.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have.
Side note, I think that my.
Okay, thank you for referring me.
Great grandfather was a blacksmith in there, right around.
In where?
In the depot, your bike were.
You should be like a special.
Because.
Just tell us your grandfather.
That was it, it's a pretty short story.
All right.
Now my grandfather, my great, great father.
Okay, so we set on that. We have, or I think we're ready for liaison reports next. Uh, although I did have one final hail mary on this chart. I know I have an analytics in that case, but I, I came up with a different set of parameters that actually are more, may I plug in again?
You're all done with me.
Well, let's, let's think about what your goal is in terms of.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that this may help, um, so. Again, I tried to put it at a car point, but I didn't have time to do the whole thing, so. Okay, so.
There goes. It's gone.
There it go. Okay, so this is number of units on the horizontal axis and open space on the vertical. So you can see the outliers, I mean, are all larger number of unit developments. And that moving to twenty-five to thirty-five, I think, starts to make it a significant kind of grouping. You know, that we're saying those, those that are maybe twenty-four units and less have been fine. Those above, they would be below the line. And we're trying to say if there are larger future developments, they need to move above the line.
And, and we're, um, hoping to move that way. Did we say that, uh, that, and I know this is not part of this, but are people gonna ask you how many more PRDs are likely to happen in the near future?
Well, I mean, it's unknowable, but there are certainly lots that could be.
But within, close to town, did we say?
Well, close to town, we found few, and that's why we didn't create a separate.
Have a town, have a tap for humanity, has the house they just acquired on Main Street. They're planning on doing a PRD to turn that into a duplex.
PRD?
Why does that have to be a PRD?
I don't think it's a PRD.
Couldn't be a two-family when it, once it's.
They're, they're looking to do it as a.
I guess it's an affordable PRD.
It's an affordable PRD. And then there's another one, um.
I just thought there was a one-acre minimum.
No.
Not, not for affordable?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
And then also the Concord Housing Authority to do the Juro land, that additional, that would be, they were looking at doing a PRD.
So I thought that they had a, two units on a lot, except for affordable, that they could do there. And on both of them, that they didn't need a PRD to do it. That that's one of the cases in which you can have an additional dwelling, is if you, if it's affordable.
But it's not, it's not an additional dwelling, it's, they wanna create a two-family.
And the new bylaw wouldn't work for them, or the existing bylaw?
I thought under the existing bylaw, they could, because they're affordable.
Huh, anyway.
But anyway.
Uh, yeah, so, um, and then can somebody who has five acres, can that become a PRD? You know, five acres.
Depends on the zoning district.
Any, any property become a PRD? What's the structure zoning district?
In the residency district, it only needs to be an acre. It has to be four times the acreage of the.
Undermine district.
Yeah.
That's why I just wondered if, if people would wonder, you know, how many more of these fifty-unit places could we even manage? And where would they be, um, in terms of making, having people think about?
So is the feeling I'm hearing that this still isn't helpful? Still raises more questions than.
It's interesting, it's really. I, I think it's good internally.
That's your presentation, man, that's what I say.
Well, it's public hearing, it's our presentation of the public.
I will say, this, this does a better job of getting at what you're trying to show, I think.
Okay.
In that particular, you know, as you have there, the larger ones would now currently be under the new proposed, uh, level. So that would be good. But I don't know, yeah, similarly, people are gonna be like, oh, exactly.
You never know, look at a topic, like me, and be like, well, wait a minute. Yeah, like to, to me, this chart is, you would use this chart if you were trying to, um, if we were trying to do something with changing and limiting the number of units so that we could get more projects with greater amount of open space. Like, I think this raises, this investigates this question.
Well, I think the idea would be to nudge the ones with more units up, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you had to pick one of the three, I think this one is.
This one or just the, the later years snapshot, like what the trend line would. Give it a try, try it in public hearing.
Okay, all right, I just, I just can't help myself, I just need to have a chart.
I'm gonna see. It is hard seeing all the, all they were.
Vote it in the public hearing, you see how that ballooned.
Yeah, all right, yeah, okay.
And, and is.
Now we can leave that discussion and we can go to, um.
Is the reason for, that kind of we have words that just does not follow, you know, good presentation style, is it because these get published online and people kinda wanna read all the information? Is that the theory behind having all of the text on the slides? Cause everybody does it in all town meetings, so.
Have, has all the text on the slides?
Yeah, like normally if you were presenting, you know.
I, believe it or not, that PRD presentation doesn't, I mean, it, it, it compresses.
No, but I know, but I'm saying normally you would put up a picture and then you would talk about it.
That's fine, too.
But I think is the theory that because these are, people can read these afterwards, you want the text on there.
I guess, yeah.
You'd, you'd never had.
It's a certain style, I guess.
Everybody puts all of the text on there.
I mean, the PRD bylaw, I'd say, I mean, I've done a lot of these presentations.
There's a lot of stuff going there.
It is like such a big.
Oh, that's super meaty, yeah.
More article, I mean, that, that's just the approach I took, but I, also just to get clarity on that.
For most zoning bylaw amendments, there's really not a lot of pictures.
Yeah, we're changing these words in this one.
I mean, I did, I couldn't get a picture.
Mine, mine has one.
I, I took that picture on Monday night, yeah.
So I, I, yes, you can, you can reduce each slide just down to bullet statements and then, and then read your paragraph. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
All of these were put together, I mean, Matt did three over a weekend and I did the rest in two days, so.
We appreciate that, thank you.
So if you wanna make it smaller and just bullet, definitely.
All right, but we will be back in touch by the fourth.
But there, but there is, there is some, some logic in between. There's gonna be this happy medium between what people can read in the warrant, what additional information they could get off the presentation, cause those all do get posted, um, and then before you get to, you know, town meeting. So there's some logic to that.
All right, uh, liaison reports?
And was there a middle school thing? Is it today? No, it was, was there something else this week?
I thought you were gonna have a liaison report for.
Spacey finished our work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which night last week?
Finished it, uh, several weeks.
Actually, I thought you went to that. Were you dropping the high school last week?
Public comment?
Yeah, any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
The Nescado Select Board, I'm not your liaison, but I happen to have some relevant information to what you've been talking about. I did, I was, did participate in the meeting this afternoon with Carmen Reese, uh, and legal counsel and others to review the draft warrant, which has to be finished by Friday in order to get to the printer, et cetera.
Oh, okay, so.
So I just wanna give you a heads up that town council did have some, um, comments to make on your particular warrant articles and it expects to speak with, um, Marcia and Elizabeth about that. So I don't know what your process is in terms of authorizing the chair to make some changes or whatever, but that's my comment about that. Um, the second thing I would.
In the articles themselves?
Yes, yes.
But the, it, it's interesting, cause town council usually reviews the articles before warrant closing.
They did already.
They did, but there's, there's, you know.
Additional?
Yeah.
Okay.
The second thing is that I've noted the order that you would prefer for the, the, um, um, your warrant.
Planning articles?
Yeah, I'm assuming that, um, the comment made earlier about the P, um, PRD, citizen comment, uh, petitions would go immediately after the PRD, or are you hoping after the entire list?
I was hoping after the entire list, but.
Okay, okay. So, um, Carmen will be working with the Select Board on this as we set the order. And so I'll at least try to represent where you wanna be and Matt, you might be at the meeting as well, so. And then the third thing I wanna comment on is that, um.
I mean, by the way, I think it's acceptable to put the petition PRD warrant articles after, but I think it'd be preferable to put them after everything.
Sure, okay. The third thing I wanna mention is that Thursday night is the Hatts meeting, the area, um, Haskam Area Towns meeting at six o'clock in Lincoln. Elizabeth, um, Russ will be there to talk about trends in housing for, um, surrounding cities, uh, towns. But the important thing I wanted to bring to your attention for that meeting is that that particular night Bedford and possibly Lexington are gonna be talking about the strategy and their approach to bringing the accessory dwelling bylaw to town meeting, and that may be of interest to.
Cause they passed them recently, in, in twenty eighteen, I think, yeah.
Lexington did?
And there's one, there's one that's, Bedford, maybe.
Maybe earlier, Bedford did last year, I think.
One of them failed.
Yeah, I thought Bedford failed.
But they may be coming up again in what, what they.
Oh, it, I did.
So that's gonna be talked about, and I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, thanks. Any other public comment? All right, then I think we're done for tonight, thank you.